Order, today is Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, and it's five thirty P M. Um, Ms. Hardy, would you do the invocation and Mr. Nizad the pledge?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this gathering, we ask that your Holy Spirit dwell among all of us, and may your peace flow throughout this land, throughout this country, throughout this world, Lord Jesus, for the peace that is so needed in the country of Israel at this time, and among our country as well. Thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us, we ask that we stay in order, do things that are pleasing to you, to conduct the business of Sulfur, all this I ask in your son, Jesus' name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, conference.
Ms. Ellender?
Here.
Mr. Nizad?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Abchar?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Okay, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, I'll need a motion in a second to move.
Second.
Any questions or any... Please vote. Oh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, approval of the agenda. I need a motion to move.
Second.
Um, any questions? Any... Please vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Item number one is a public hearing on ordinance authorizing Mayor Danahay to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Department of Treasury, State of Louisiana, to receive allocated funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, ordinance one fourteen twenty-three, Mayor Danahay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, this last legislative session, they had a supplemental appropriation bill that was there, and we were contacted about, um, having two hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to the city of Sulfur. Uh, we have received or are going to receive that, and then we're gonna appropriate that to the housing authorities through sanitary sanitation improvements.
All right, this is a public hearing, um, do we need a motion in a second?
Some...
Second. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Anyone from the public? Please vote.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Item number two is a public hearing on ordinance amending ordinance number eighteen sixty-one M C series adopted June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, to increase the minimum number of maintenance cycles in fiscal year twenty twenty-three from four cycles to five cycles, maintenance mowing agreement with D O T D, ordinance one fifteen twenty-three. Mayor Danahay, I'll need a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Anyone from the public? Please vote.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes. Item number three is a public hearing on ordinance granting a rezone from business to commercial to G, D G P Properties LLC, eight twenty-two North Bagless Parkway, to allow for a bar, ordinance one sixteen twenty-three, Ms. Hardy.
Uh, yes, is anyone here from the D G P properties?
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for you. Do we have a... I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Hello, um, so tell me, um, I did drive by there.
Wait, would you go to the microphone, state your name and address, please?
Yes.
Your name and address.
My name is Gromesh Saint Ten.
And address?
It's a business that is eight two zero North Bagless Parkway, or his bar address is eight twenty-two North Bagless Parkway, South of seven zero six sixty.
So, um, I did visit that property, and I saw where you have an existing gas station.
Yes.
That yours to the grocery store, the little shopping mall, so originally, what was that building, uh, intended for? It looks like it was, is designed, uh, was designed to be like a drive-through?
Yeah, it's a drive-through, it's a daiquiri, daiquiri, you know?
Daiquiri.
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 Yes.
Okay, is that what you're gonna offer?
Yeah, it's daiquiri and, uh, poker machine and bar, definitely.
Okay, daiquiri, poker, bar, okay, so no live music band or anything like that?
No, no music, yeah, it's outside, it's quite bar, just, just me.
Obviously, uh, the con, my concern was, you know, even though it's not opposing our ordinance, um, the residential area
Right.
behind it, so that's a concern, but I understand, you know, that, um, it's, again, it's not opposing what our ordinance states, that, uh, your business or a bar opposed to if it was a church or school, or, uh, close in proximity to a playground. Um, so, uh, that's all my questions, I don't know if anyone else have questions?
What, did, have you always owned this property?
Yes.
It's around the...
That's...
Box. It's around the store, it's around the B box.
Right. Is it B box?
It's a brand-new building.
It's a brand-new building.
Yeah, so the structure right now is an existing gas station and a shopping mall.
Yeah, it's, it's one, it's all one building, just with partitioning, you know, it's one building.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was B box ice house, and then, uh, she sold it, and they opened up a couple of little places for, uh, A T V repairs and stuff like that, so...
A T V, that's correct.
But it's the same building that she had, they did some remodeling on it.
No, it's not the same.
No, it's, it's, it's to the, uh, north of that.
That ain't B box.
It's... The A T V is, is across from us, it's to the north.
I'm not...
Well, it's right, it's adjacent to it, it's, it's north of.
I helped out, I thought, yeah.
Um, anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Anyone from the public? Is any other questions? Okay, please vote.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Um, item number four is a resolution approving liquor license for Gator Bar, eight twenty-two North Bagless Parkway, resolution fifty-one twenty-three. I'll need a motion in a second, so move?
Second.
Yes.
Any other questions? Please vote.
Ms. Abchar?
Do I need to ask the public? Do I need to ask the public on the resolution?
This is any man.
Okay, if you want to, yeah, okay. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Anyone from the public? Okay, please vote.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Item number five is rule to show cause for the condition of the following addresses to condemn a building or structure located at thirty-four oh nine Maplewood Drive in accordance with Article nine, section five through two eighty-six, five two eighty-six through five two ninety-six, Ms. Abchar.
Is the property owners of this property here? Ms. Ms. Danahay, did we send out, um, certified letters, note buying?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I spoke to them.
You wanna come and give us a rundown at least now?
I spoke to them, they said they were going, they were trying to get their stuff in order, that they wanted, are planning on demoing it, but they have not secured the permit as of today, I told them they had to have it booked today for it to be all but the agenda.
Right, and, and since Laura, um, there's not been any type of...
There's not been any repairs, there was someone living in it, and then they, it was rented, then they moved out. I have about a year and a half ago.
All right, so based upon the no action in the bad condition assumption, I'm gonna move to show cause on this.
I need a question, okay? Do we have a motion in a second? Um, please vote.
You wanna ask the public?
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Anyone from the public? Please vote.
Ms. Abchar?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes. Item six is, is a resolution granting a variance to Regina Primo, four seventeen Virginia Street, to allow for a fourteen by sixty-four mobile home to be greater than ten years of age, two thousand and five, resolution fifty-two twenty-three, mean. Um, I'll need a motion in a second, so...
Second.
Okay, um, do you have any questions, anybody? Bill, you wanna speak?
Uh, George will say so.
Yeah, I have a question.
Uh... State your name and your address, please.
That's the procedure.
Regina Primo, twenty-seven fifty-nine Avenue, Sulfur, Louisiana.
So I went by and I looked at all the boxes, I have a question for you, the mobile home that you had there.
I had, okay.
Yeah, uh, because the lot now is, is empty. It was, I'm, I'm gonna make an assumption, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, it was damaged during war?
The last hurricane we had, yes.
With that, Laura, Delta, pretty much, yeah. Um, Delta seems to escape everything, but Laura, Delta, um, so you had someone living in it at the time?
When it was...
With, with...
No, it was empty at that time, it was empty at that time, we, we didn't have anybody living in it.
When the storm hit, they had...
Well, no, nobody was living, I don't think.
How long had it set there empty, do you know?
Guess to me, I have no, I mean...
And, and so, and...
Did you say a few months?
Yeah, about a few months. And so, so when the storm hit, whichever one, Laura, Delta, uh, how long did, did, did it remain there on the property?
Hmm, hmm, it stayed there until, well, we've been dealing with this for about three months now, so a month before that, y'all, I said, they sent a letter saying, uh, you need to do something with it, they asked us just to put it up on the blocks, and, uh, they would've been fine with it, but I was like, uh, I wanted to get something newer in there anyway, so I was like, okay, let's, let's get something nicer than what I had.
So, almost two and a half years it just sat there empty?
I cut the grass, I cut the gra, we cut the grass cut, and it had any issues at all, didn't get any letters or anything, 'cause I knew that there'd be a problem if I didn't cut the grass.
And thank you for doing that. Um, you know, I'm gonna be honest with you, the, the new mobile home that you're looking at, you don't own it, is that correct?
No, they're still holding off on me buying it, um...
You know, we have ordinances because we want to improve the quality of life for homeowners, and they're not intended to penalize anyone, but I, I'm gonna be very honest with you, my personal concern is, it sat there for three years, basically, two and a half years, let's, let's just give that, no, nobody's living there, they're not taking any action on it, did the city send you a letter, you said the city sent you a letter, that's why I'm assuming the city sent you a letter addressing that mobile home?
To put it back up on the block, because it was, it was off the block.
Do we give, uh, instructions on how to, shelling, on how to?
It was a letter stating repair or demo.
Repair demo, but did we tell them how they need to repair?
I, I office did.
Okay.
Just said it need to be on the block, put back on the blocks, I was like, well, yeah, that's what I, that's what I, was supposed to like, yeah, that's what we were trying to...
It...
And to make it nicer, it just, it was like, okay, I want a nicer one on there, so it was like, it was like nice and...
You know, maybe you're getting, maybe there's a good deal on this mobile home, but why can you look into getting something that fit, fit the ordinance, because however old it is now, and I kinda knew the last minute, but I've kinda forgotten, um, you know, in the next five or ten years, it's gonna be that much older, and so, we have an ordinance to try to help improve the quality of life, not just for whoever's gonna be using or occupying that mobile unit, but for the homes around there, because I noticed just on the next block up, right there, and almost in line with your property, is a brand-new mobile home on the corner, and it was very neatly keep, kept, and I, and I can't say that yours hasn't been, wasn't ne- neatly kept, but I didn't see it, all I could see what was left, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, I just have a very grave concern about not trying to follow our ordinances, they're there for a reason, and everybody likes them until they're faced with one, so I, I really, the length of time it's, it's set empty?
I have a, like I initially said, was, the reason I did this was I have a grandson, and it wasn't noted on the minutes, so I don't know how accurate the minutes were, when you asked me last time this, I said the first thing was, my son, my grandson was gonna be moving into it if he got his first job, and that was our plan, so that was always what we told him, that, you know, you'd have a place to stay, so that's why it's gonna be a nicer place.
I, I re, I clearly, just, so you'll know, I clearly remember you saying that, and then I remember you following up, well, if you didn't, then we're gonna try to rent it, I remember, I very clearly remember that.
Yeah, yes, yeah, I did say that, but...
That's just, that's all the questions I have.
I would like to know, not you, Mr. Primo, but could we put stipulation, like the fence itself, it looks like it's kinda needing some help?
Yeah.
Those are the kinda things I'd like to see happen, is the fence, you know, looking good, and you, you know, of course, you gotta put the skirting around, and you have to follow all those ordinances, but I'd like to see if, if we need to put those in there, or...
I was gonna get the skirting on it, and I planned on tearing down the fence, that was how it was before, so I just left it just to,
okay.
Just to, for, they got kids, I think.
But you're not gonna have a fence on it?
I planned on that, I mean...
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see it either go on or...
We can do that, I can do that, no problem.
You wanna make a stipulation?
Uh, I think so, to, to either remove it completely, or to, to fix it, you know, make it look like it's, uh, you know, newer, alive, in good shape.
I need a motion in a second.
I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
That's just for the amendment, the stipulation.
That's just for the fencing and that kinda thing.
Oh, for the fencing?
Yes.
All right.
Not a lawyer, he's not here, but the questions that y'all asked are not germane to what he's up here to get, you know? Uh, they added some things to it, if you wanna improve the city, uh, you're, you're renting variances for travel trailers at unlimited amount of time, you got one on, 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 uh, on, uh, Irwin Street, you got one behind my daughter's house, it's just covered up with a blue tar, and you guys give them a variance on this thing, for as long as this boy's living in there, he can live there, but now you come back and you say you wanna improve the city, you know? Uh, I, I don't understand why this is such an issue, you know, you've given variances, uh, for things way worse than this, only thing that I can recall from the last meeting was two of the individuals that sitting up there were opposed to him renting the thing, you know? And I showed you, and I can show you again, the amount of money that's brought into the city by rent, you know, I pay a hundred and seventy dollars a, a year on a twenty-nine-hundred square foot house that anybody would be proud to live in, and I pay seven hundred something dollars a year on a one-bedroom house that I rent, so rent brings way more revenue into the city than the individuals that are living in their own homes, you know, those people have to eat, just like the people that live in homes have to eat, but the revenue that's generated by taxes is gen- generated mainly by businesses and by rentals, you know? I, I don't know what the issue is, I've only looked at this trailer, I hope all of you have looked at the trailer, you know? And, and, and I would like to invite anybody that's got time to look at some of the things that I look at every day, when I go to my daughter's house and see this thing that y'all pass, put a FEMA trailer right up against the fence, nobody checked it or anything else, just put it right up against the fence, I can slap it from the fence, and it's nice, covered with a blue tar, because it leaks so bad, and those people have been busted, I don't know how many times, you, you do one thing one way, and some, and something else the other way, if you don't get consistent, we're never gonna have anything cleaned up, you can't clean something up by letting some people live in travel trailers and then condemning people for having a trailer over ten years old. I still got another minute. The thing about it is, I don't think that the county city council should be asking questions about people's personal business if it doesn't pertain exactly to what they're asking for in the variance, now, maybe that's your latitude that you got, I don't know who gave it to you, but really, when you start asking questions that are completely not germane to the question that, that the man is up here trying to get done, I mean, these people have been running up the flagpole for several months, and so have the people that sit on the trailer, I talk to them too, you know, I mean, this is getting a little bit shady, thank you.
On the, on the fence issue, only on the, the front of the fence, maybe the back, 'cause it's a wooden fence, it, on, on my property.
I thought it was a hurricane, you know?
I got, well, I got a hurricane fence in the front, I own that, you got the, uh, health connect, the health unit on the other side, theirs is kinda, theirs is kinda bending, and then on the other side is the property owner's fence on that side, so, so I can tear down the one right in front of me, for sure, so, just make sure you, I, I don't want, I don't want you to think I'm gonna tear down my neighbor's fence, or...
We expect you to do that. Okay, please vote.
The front, the front fence, the fence in the front.
The fence in the front, the hurricane fence is yours, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just...
That's what we're talking about.
Yes.
Um, okay, please vote.
Uh, Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nizad?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abchar?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Item number seven is a resolution granting a variance to Ronnie Hossein, fifteen oh seven Weekly Road, to allow for a four hundred and eighty-square-foot manufactured home, rather than a four hundred and forty-five square foot, six hundred feet, postponed from August tw- twenty twenty-three, agenda, resolution fifty-three twenty-three, Mr. Nizad?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Hossein?
Yes. Um, where are we at? Okay, uh, last time I came here, and of course, and I gave my, all my life story, uh, I spoke with Ms. Fontenot, we're moving that green trailer out of that place, and then, uh, I think you all decided to give me some time to stay on the FEMA trailer in the back.
Which one is...
I'm moving that green one, is it green one?
Okay, you're moving it out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and where, and you're wanting to put it somewhere else?
No, not me, somewhere else, but...
What is four hundred and eighty square feet?
The backs.
Yeah, so the green one wasn't even up for, uh, that, that wasn't what we were voting on last time, what we were voting on was the FEMA trailer in the back, this green one, um, has been on the property for a long time.
For a long time.
Okay, but the one in the back is four hundred and eighty square feet?
That's the FEMA trailer that we're, that we're talking on. Um, Mr. Nizad, can you give me an update to kinda fill it in, 'cause I, he's, he's saying that y'all gave him an extension?
We give him more time to get the green trailer out.
Okay.
Till November eleven.
That's, that's the main issue was, green trailer, but whole thing about this concept, don't take me wrong, you know, I'm a good in English, so I understand food.
Right.
Yeah, artistic leader, so now, thing is that, they say one thing, we go other place, other thing, whole thing is that, I'm trying to, of course, you know, you know, I'll build the house, right?
Well, well, that's my next question, let, we, we know that, we know the story already.
Yes.
Has any permits been pulled or any inspections done on the home?
Yes.
Why hasn't that been done?
Why it hasn't happened, because they told me, uh, when I'm ready to work on the home, I can have inspection, anyway, no, yeah, permits, I'm sorry, so...
He has until the first part of December to come to us with a plan to pull permits.
Okay.
Because he did not have a plan with any drawings or anything, he had to get with the, the, he was ready in time to do that. But the FEMA trailer, I mean, it's a whole...
So that puts us in kind of a holding pattern as well until December.
No.
'Cause if he's gotta get rid of the, the green trailer by, uh, this, this month.
November seventeen.
November seventeen, yes, and then we tell him he can't keep this FEMA trailer in the homes, not safe to occupy, that, that we're aware of, um...
So the green trailer is not livable either?
It's storage right now, he, he gets his user to storage.
And the FEMA trailer, you're buying the FEMA trailer from someone?
I can buy, you know, he, he let pay rent, everyone.
We allow the four hundred and eighty foot, which we have never allowed a four hundred and eighty foot to mobile home to stay.
That was a long time.
What?
That was a long time.
Okay, well, as long as I remember, which is not, could be not a long time.
But, yeah, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, I, I know people in Mustang Road, that, that lives in that house, was twelve feet by forty feet, old garden house in Mustang Road.
On which road?
Mustang, Mustang, Mustang Road.
It was a house, right?
Yes, and that thing is like, jetta house, so I'll picture, I can show that to you.
But that's not, that's not apples to apple, the house is not a mobile home?
The one everywhere, plywood on the top, and usually has an awning, you know, so that, if, if you call this the home, then I don't know what, what you call it, home.
I see we're making progress, at least he's getting rid of the green trailer, and that he's got plans to have everything turned in by the December date with the city, um...
I'm trying, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Mr. Hossein, if you have...
Yeah, I'm trying to improve the city, 'cause I don't like to live in the neighborhood, or leave it, look at the corner right there, Abchar, you know the right, please, yeah, so, I can make it to our, our, but, but I'm trying to improve myself, I, I want you to help me.
So those improvements have to come based on your initiative, you taking that initiative, and that's doing exactly what Mr. Nizad told you, so by December, you have to have plans for the house?
Yes. I'm working on it, as a matter of fact, I, I was talking to the governor's office about my...
The governor's office?
Yes, sir, and then I told him everything, I was serious concern, my concern, and they have a lady, she called me up, quoting about, me, I'm, I'm trying my best, me, I, I have lots of money, and I want me pulling everything, but other people don't pull nothing, that's not fair, I'll get it.
Well, my concern is if, if, 'cause I, I, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not in favor of you, I, I wouldn't have continued with this, but we're in a situation now where I don't wanna put you homeless, um, that, uh, I, I would ask that we give him till December to see what he comes up with, the city, given that they've given him those dates already.
Mr. Nizad, may I, hear that?
Yes.
You might wanna give him to January, so if he's, I think he's supposed to come in, pull his permit by December.
By December, and this would...
Yeah, so, okay, I wanna wait till after the first of the year.
I really don't wanna...
Well, I mean, it's only up to you, you know?
No, I understand.
Just a random thing.
I, I, I appreciate that, because you, you're right.
December meeting, but this doesn't leave this mobile home here permanently?
No, that mobile home has to be gone by that, by the time we come back.
He resides in that mobile home currently?
The, the, the FEMA trailer, in the back, the, the green mobile home, I believe, is one of Madam Chair's, that one's already planned to be removed by November, so that's gotta be gone.
The city wants me to move that more home so they can have nice houses in the neighborhood, which is okay, I love it, you know, but thing is that, it's not me alone pulling the horse, you know, let other people join me too.
I have some questions.
Yes.
So, you said you started redoing your home after Hurricane Rita, was that right?
I started building the house after Hurricane Rita, slab and everything.
Okay, so my question to you is this, the FEMA trailer, did that come when Rita happened?
No, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, no.
And...
Laura, Laura, four months after Laura.
I believe the green trailer is the one you got after Rita.
Yes, yes.
But that wasn't a FEMA, the green?
No, ma'am, no.
Okay.
Actually, what, I lived on the trailer for twenty years, right, you're not laughing at me, right, but guess what? I set the money I saved, I put it on the house.
Well, that's the problem, we haven't had any progress on the house since Rita, um...
The roof done, all the, he says done, as a matter of fact, as we speak, one guy's working right now, inside.
So let's, let's, I, I, I'd, I'd make a motion to, um, I, I think by the December meeting, though, it takes place after the eighth to see where we would be, that we could do...
December eleventh, December meeting.
Yeah, we could do the December eleventh meeting to get...
So we're gonna revisit this in December?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and in the meantime, that, that the green trailer be removed by that meeting, and, uh, we have everything in line with permits and everything.
Thank you, but I have one more request.
We haven't gotten...
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, give me a request, let's see.
No, no, uh, go ahead.
No, 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 what, what's your request?
Okay, they have all the trailers in my neighborhood, so do they have to move or they stays?
I'm not sure what your, if they're, if they're, yeah, I mean, if they've already been zoned, and they're there...
So I'm zoned too, right there.
I believe you are, Mr. Hossein, yes, so...
Since you're not using the green mobile home for living in.
No, it's for living in.
Okay, I see.
Right.
We have a one dwelling per lot ordinance, and so having all this on one lot, it's a problem. Uh, so you have, I think, did you have something to say?
Yeah.
Do you have a, your form out there?
Okay.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Duane Gilley, fifty-eight oh five Sixteenth Street, Orange, Texas. Okay, I just got to weigh up all this. The green trailer is gonna be moved, they're gonna move the green trailer, and the house, he just contacted me, I'm a contractor. We're gonna remodel the house, so all, the permits that he need, we're gonna pull permits and everything for the, for ordinance. We're gonna pull the permits, and we're gonna remodel the house, and you say you got till November to get the house moved. The house, the trailer will be moved soon as he gets items out of it. I already have a moving company to come and move the trailer, and that's the one that they're gonna get the trailer to, they're gonna remodel the trailer.
But you need to get with the city and make sure that you have the proper permits for moving the trailer.
Right.
Yes, yes.
And he also has the deadline, right, so you, you know.
Yeah, the November seventeenth deadline.
December or something.
Well, it'll be, it'll be moved prior to November seventeenth.
Okay.
And, the house will, I can't say nothing about the FEMA house, because the man gotta have somewhere to stay.
Right.
And, I know there's plenty FEMA trailers all over, so I don't know, we're gonna let the FEMA trailer stay there until the house get remodeled and fixed, or not?
If we can see some progress, because the issue was, this house has been vacant since Hurricane Rita.
Correct, okay.
And, and we haven't seen any progress.
Yes, sir.
If it was continuing with no progress, then, okay, we can't allow, let's.
Okay, all right.
Sir.
I'm glad to hear there's progress.
Tell me your name again.
Duane Gilley.
Duane Gilley, and which your address?
Fifty-eight oh five Sixteenth Street in Orange, Texas.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, ma'am, I have to add something, I pulled the permit for slab in two thousand six or seven. I'm ready, okay, then, I started building the house, training, everything. Then, now, in, in Hurricane Laura, it damaged my roof, so I fixed the roof and everything, right? I'm working on the windows from now, as we speak. Then I'm working this month, not this month, two weeks from now, I'll have a game plan, I'll submit that to the governor's office. Then of course I'll submit one to this Fontenot, about game plan, what I need permits and everything, so.
It sounds like Mr. Gilley has that.
But, you know, I, I should let you know, like, you know, what's, what's going on, yeah. Okay, now, thing is that, the one thing I, I want, one thing really bothers me, definitely. I'll move the trailer, of course I'll move, that's what you want, I'll move it, but other people have to move the trailer, or three trailers leaving the corner.
Sir.
It's like rotten, and nobody's, it's a ten or nothing.
We're just talking about your trailer, nobody else's trailer, just you, or that's all, we're talking about?
I understand your point, ma'am, the, with respect, with, with respect.
I'm gonna stop you because you can't talk about the other trailers, they're not on the agenda.
People don't, don't live there, they have a trailer in the corner.
Mr. Hussein, we can talk about that.
Okay, thank you, that's something to let you know.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
But we can talk about that. Uh, so, so, um, do we just pass it until the December meeting, or do we need to?
Well, do we need to amend it, I say, that, um, we'll allow it just until the December?
Post-von until December.
Okay.
December, allow December meeting. I have a motion and second from Mr. Nazat, I just need a second.
Second. Okay.
Get motion.
Please vote.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshire?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes, okay, so you have, you can talk with, um, somebody after the meeting? You have until, uh, the, the December meeting?
To, not that, to, to pull the permits to show us that we're getting.
Okay, you got, so December be love with the full permits.
Get the prior start, so, give it to Mr. Naze.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hussein.
Thank you. Okay, number eight is a resolution authorizing the advertisement of bids for the annual supply of pipe and fittings, limestone and asphalt mix, and chemical supplies with the city of Sulphur. Resolution fifty-four twenty-three, Mayor Dana Hay. I need to vote some over.
Second.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Anyone from the public, please vote.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshire?
Yes.
Number nine is a resolution reappointing John Hardy Jr. to the Sulphur Industrial Development Board, resolution fifty-five twenty-three. Going, Ms. Hardy? Make a motion.
Second.
Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this, anyone from the public? Please vote.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Abshire?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ellender?
Yes.
Mr. Nazat?
Yes.
Okay, um, we now come to the public comment section of the meeting. Try to stay at three minutes per speaker, and only speak on one, one time per item. Uh, all I have is Mr. DePetta.
And I'm gonna put my timer on, so that I, I don't go over.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Danny DePetta, I live at five zero nine eight Bonding in Sulphur. I am still the, uh, chairman of the Home Rule Charter Commission until Saturday, which would be the last time that you'll be able to vote yes for the charter, and I hope that you will. I'm just up here today, and I want to thank a, a lot of the people that helped us get to this point, a point that's almost a year since we began. Uh, first thing I want to thank is the commission, you know, the commission did a lot of good work. You know, we found, uh, solutions, and we didn't find issues, you know, we didn't find problems, we, you know, we found answers. And we put together a great document, and I think a document that's gonna take us into twenty twenty-three and beyond. I want to thank the administration, uh, who, when we needed help, was there for us. I want to thank the people sitting at the, the top table up there, you know, there's, they did a lot of work, uh, in order to make sure that the word got out, and what we were trying to do. I really want to thank the people who sat down with me and took the time to visit on what I had to say about the charter, and what it meant, the true meaning and intent and the reason of why, how, why we built it that way, and the way we put it together. And all I wanted, I also want to thank the hundreds of people that put signs in their yards and at their businesses. You know, they believed in us, and they saw that we had a good, a good, uh, product, and we had a good deal to put together, and we, uh, and we were very proud of it. You know, we did a lot of good work, and I especially want to thank my wife, who, who put up with all the things that I had to put up with, uh, through the, the year, to get to this point, and my special friend Becky, who was at, with me the whole time when we were putting this together. Uh, thanks to you all, you know, we appreciate everything that you did, and we hope that you'll vote yes this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fifty-three seconds to go.
Jerry Hewitt, fourteen nineteen Bed Street, um, I've got two things. First, I want to thank Ms. Abshire and the City of Sulphur for, um, removing the tree that was across both lanes of traffic on Maplewood Drive going, uh, eastbound, um, from the last storm, it really started leaning, uh, it had just a branch going over one lane, and then this last storm, of course, it was going across both lanes. So, uh, I just appreciate, um, making it a priority, you know, so that it didn't fall and hurt somebody, or, you know, seriously injured. Um, the other, the other thing, um, there's, I've heard it a lot, I've seen it driving on Maplewood Drive, I'm sure you've heard it. When are we gonna get the stripes? When are we gonna get the markings? You got a third of it semi-marked, and then the rest of it, you have nothing, and people playing fraud, or, you know, I mean, it's, it's a nightmare. Just, just asking.
Austin, would you answer that question, because there's a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public wishes to speak? This will end the public comment section of the meeting.
Uh, so, to answer that question as simple as possible, um, so, I don't know if you noticed, uh, when they were moving to the last two panels, uh, they had some significant cracking, uh, they started today. Uh, plans aren't before that tomorrow, whether committing, um, and everything goes as planned, uh, we should have, uh, the remaining grinding, um, those panels forward, and all the striping done, um, by next week. Thank you.
And Austin, the reason y'all didn't do the striping was because of the punch list and the repairs? And then the need, if you would have stripped, you'd had to go back and redo that process?
That's correct, so we, we would, uh, take vibes and, um, note areas that had, you know, significant, uh, roughness on it, and they would, um, they would go back and grind those areas, and I'm sure you, you can notice some of those areas that were grinded, not directionally, but.
I, and I want to thank you and the Myers Group for really doing significant work on, on working within the bid we had to accept because of the low bidding process required, and holding them to the standards we wanted that hoped for Maplewood Drive to be. So, thank you, that was, you, y'all done a lot of work.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, um, the tree situation on Maplewood Drive, uh, we actually, of course, that was noticed, uh, in the weekend. And, uh, we did, our major supervisor did try to get somebody to come out and do that during the weekend, but was unable to get anybody. So the first thing yesterday, or yesterday morning, he had somebody come out and take that tree down, so. We reacted as quickly as we possibly could to do that. Uh, one other thing, uh, we had a situation at, at one of our water plants, it just so happens, a part of our water plant, that, uh, we had, uh, a valve that was stuck open and, uh, continued to pump out of a particular well that, uh, as it grew down, put out a lot more iron than normal, you know, breaking through our, our filters once again. We think that's an anomaly, that's not something that would normally happen, but it did happen, and so we, um, began to pump out from another well, which was corrected the situation, and we went about flushing, uh, lines throughout the city, so on the western end of the city in particular. Uh, and to be able to clear that water, and you should see, uh, substantial clearing. We do say, if anybody has had any laundry or anything that's been impacted, we do have a, um, uh, a supplement that you can add to your wash, that will remove those rust stains, and so, uh, we had a few people ask about that, so we're gonna take care of that for them, too. It's free of choice, of course. Uh, lastly, uh, Saturday is voting day, uh, if you haven't voted, please go out and vote, it's a secret right there. Everybody should exercise that in all possible. Y'all have any questions for me?
I just, I just want to thank y'all, uh, everyone for responding to the water issue, and for the, uh, city employees for working so hard to try to resolve that issue, so. Thank y'all very much.
Our city employees do a tremendous amount of work, they go out on weekends and so forth.
And it was a weekend and a holiday, so it was appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, I had several things listed, you, you covered two, so thank you. Um, I'd like to congratulate the City of Sulphur, mayor, administration, um, Sarah Griffith. We received a letter from the Lieutenant Governor, appointing Sulphur, the downtown cultural district certified as a cultural district effective October one, twenty twenty-three. Mayor, do you want to give us a?
Yeah, sure, uh, this is something that we started, uh, some time back, um, the community foundation had, uh, looked at various things that they, uh, what do they call it, cosmetic, the projects that they wanted to accomplish, and one of the things was a strong downtowns, and it just so happens it's Sulphur that got really, this spotlight put on it. And one of the first things you have to do is have that designation, a cultural district designation. Uh, that designation extends from Grove all the way to, um, I think, uh, if I remember correctly, to Burton Street. This opened up a lot of doors for us, and, and, and that area, particularly downtown area, because that's where our focus is right now. It opens a lot of doors from a, from a, um, from a monetary standpoint, fiscally, there's some things, there's a lot of, uh, grants that are available to us now that, that we're able to, uh, seek out, uh, to improve our downtown area, we, we plan on doing that. Uh, we'll work with community foundation and others to be able to do that. Um, it's a little daunting, uh, I know the grant world is a little bit out of our realm of what we do normally. Uh, there are people out there that can help us with that, we will certainly plug into that, uh, make sure that, uh, we take full advantage of that. And so, uh, that's kind of the extent of that, uh, you know, thank you for mentioning that, I completely forgot about that. One other thing I'd like to recognize, uh, Finance Director, Karen Foreborn, uh, she has been selected to be on the board of directors.
It's the GF O A.
Yeah, GF O A, it's, 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 it's our governmental financial people, yeah, financial officers, um, and they, uh, it's a pretty big deal. And she's gonna be on that board, uh, for us.
You stole my thunder three times, it's all good.
I'm planning to, uh, you know, not only just represent the finance directors across the municipalities in the state, but also take advantage of the, you know, the learning that I, and the, that I can gain, you know, from other finance directors as well, and bring that back here to Sulphur.
What a high honor, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Uh, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so please support the cause, everyone, and, uh, October fourteenth is a special day. It's my birthday.
Go vote.
Homecoming week.
Yes.
Yeah.
So go to work, and, uh, Friday is the parade, so if you can make it out, at least do so.
Um, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, reviewing what the charter says and what it does not say. And there's some things that I know, that there's been a punch list, uh, that some people have used as a guideline to, to review the charter on whether or not they, they should support it or not, and I wanted to just try to address some very, very briefly. But something that I thought, I, I don't know to the depth that sometimes we look into things. And one of them, uh, in particular was, you know, council can vote raises, and I want to put it to you in terms of what my research has, has shown on that. If this ca- if this charter passes, and I hope that it does, for progress, future progress for our city, then it would mean in twenty-four years, there would be five raises given. Not by us, but we would have the opportunity to vote for the first raise, which would be then the second, the next term coming up. So if you do the math on that, that's five times in twenty-four years. What concerns me, look in your churches, look in, at you, in your playgrounds where you need coaches, look at anything we do today for volunteers. How many people stop up, step up to volunteer? You have a hard time getting ushers at church, you have a hard time getting coaches to coach our children. Everybody has such busy and full lives, moving at fast pa- pa- okay, I'm gonna talk, fast pace. They don't volunteer for anything. People review this, the five of us sitting here is volunteering our time, and we do. I served aboard for twenty-three years, I didn't get paid, but I served because I had a commitment to serve our community. Whether or not we agree or not, I still have a commit, a commitment to our community in my heart to try to do the best I can. But to put it in real terms, if you do not know, our salaries comes from the general fund. The general fund is funded by rev, by, uh, sales tax revenue. Who puts into that? Every one of us in this room, whether you live in Sulphur or not, or whether you live in Wisconsin or Florida, that's where our revenue. So I'm thinking, well, okay, how could this be tangible to us to let you know what you have been paying for us to sit up here? And the only tangible thing that I could come up with is the services based upon those that have water services, those that have sewer services, and garbage services. Do you know what that number currently is? Not voters, but people that have services. That's eight thousand four hundred and forty-three service connections, which means for us to sit up here, you're currently paying twenty-one cents a month for all. you're currently paying twenty-one cents a month for all five of us. That's what it costs. That's what it costs. So if this goes through, and let's say you have a group that is serving, that has served, that has made decisions on many issues, if it was doubled, you would pay forty-two cents. I've heard the things, oh, I gotta protect my children and my grandchildren. I got you. But let's protect them by growing our city, because you're not gonna have to worry what you pay anybody if you don't grow the city. No one will stay. And that's just simple, simple, ma'am. Because if you grow our city, if our city grows and we all collectively grow it together, guess what? That tangible number, the number of homes is gonna go up. You might have some salary increases. But at most, if you doubled it, you were looking at what, forty-two cents? And that's without any growth of tangible connections. So think about it. That's all that means. And it means attracting people for the future to come and serve here, to help make life better for all of us. That's what it's about. Term limits. You've had District One, that is, had currently a twenty-year and the previous a twenty-year. People, if you don't want a term limit, then get out there and sign your name up. And you sit and take some of the stuff that you hear on Facebook or people just making comments to you. Sign your name up. How are we attracting people to put their name out there to vote? I mean, it's just simple. You know, talking about videoing, that's not a charter item. That should be an ordinance item. Why? Yes, an ordinance what item? You know why? Because a charter, if we have to keep our charter as long as we have it this time, from eighty-four to currently, guess what's gonna happen? Videoing is gonna be a thing of the past. No telling with what technology has to say. So if you have it as an ordinance, you can change it at any time, whether or not the charter changes or not. So it's like faxing. Faxing at one time used to be the communication tool. It's not that. I mean, yeah, people still fax, but faxing's not the t, the ticket item for technology like it used to be. So put yourself in a position where you can change that if you need to, to keep up with times. And then the, talking about the charter commission, you know, they could write themselves in, that's been our way since eighty-four. But look what this, look what this council did. I think we made wise choices. We went out to our constituents. Each of us had that opportunity to extend that offer to people, and we did. And we had a, I'm very grateful for the people that served, because for many, it has been a very thankless position, and that's unfortunate, because they worked truly to represent all of us. Whether you agree with every item or not, they worked for you, they worked for all of us. And the big thing, whatever we do, we're guided by our charter, but guess what? The legislature supersedes that. So everything we do, just like adding something, and tonight I thought, ooh, tonight we'll probably have something we didn't have anything we had to add. Law, state law says that if, you know, your business continues up to twenty-four hours before your meeting. And so if something happens in between the time that seven days that we have to post, in that twenty-four hour period, guess what? We're bound to add it. So if this charter doesn't pass, there will be no difference in that. And that has been a, a brave concern to many people, but we can't fix that. We can fix it by giving you more time to look at it if the charter passes and allows us to then follow the, the state legislative law. That's what we have to abide by. It's not meant to harm anybody. It's meant to move our city forward with progress. And I thank y'all for listening to me, and I'm sorry I don't get into all the Facebook stuff. I don't, I, I choose to try to fill my, my mind with positive. I don't wanna get into all the stuff that just gets really kinda ugly and out of hand sometimes. And I know people don't intend for that to happen, but I've got too much going on in my life to have to, to, to put myself in a position to be that negative. I don't want to be there. Let's move forward together. Let's go vote. Vote your heart, vote your knowledge, and let's move our city forward. Thank you.
One more thing.
Thank you, people.
We need people, Gordon, if you files this here.
Real quick, I, I, I do, you know, I, I remember listening to, uh, thank the charter commission, and so, uh, thank you, because I think y'all pointed a very good charter commission. It was really a good cross-section of folks from our, our community to serve, and did a, you know, his job of going through this document and doing some really good things with it. And, uh, I think it is, like you said, something not only for today, but for the future. And I think that leaves a lot to be said about the people that, that worked this thing and did so very well. Of course, Mr. DePetta made that, uh, that statement that, uh, he is the chair until Saturday, and that's true. Uh, if you look at the state, uh, constitution, that's what it, it, it does. It, it may become an entity to themselves until his, the vote is taken. So Saturday, we'll know where we stand with this. Either we're gonna move forward beyond here, or we're gonna be stuck in nineteen eighty-six. It's the choice of the people now.